Calling the Chico Unified Board meeting to order, and we'll do the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, are there any announcements that someone has? Any announcements? All right, well, if nobody's kids have won anything, or whatever. Okay, I guess not. That seems odd for us, but... So, we will move to the consent calendar. And is there anyone who wishes to pull an item, anyone on the board who wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? All right, so with that, may I have a motion?
Sure, I'll move passive consent calendar.
All right.
Second.
Second, okay. Moved by Tom and seconded by Matt, so all those in favor, it'll be a roll call vote.
Robinson, aye.
Lando, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Tannis, aye.
Okay, so passes four to one. Thank you, I mean four to zero. All right, so with that, we move to the discussion action calendar. And number one is the draft 2022-23 Local Control Accountability Plan.
And Tim and Tina are coming up to the podium. I just want to say a few words about the importance of the LCAP. We moved to the Local Control Funding Formula in 2014. And with that came the requirement that we do a local control accountability plan. What was unique about that is it was the first time that schools were required to engage with community and get input from our different constituent groups into the goals of the district. So, since 2014, we have been doing that. We've been meeting with our community, and we've gone initially beyond what was required. We met with different groups of parents. We met with students. We've met with staff, which was required. So, it has been something we've been actively engaged in the entire time. For Chico Unified, it sets our goals for the entire year for both the district and for the school sites. The school sites align their plans to the LCAP, and those goals are in common, and it's how each of us are evaluated, ensuring that we address the goals of the LCAP. Another unique part of the LCAP is that for Chico Unified, we look at it as each individual student, the group, as well as groups of students. And that is required by the LCAP that we do that. So, our belief is that we help every single student. Each student is important. Each student has unique needs. We need to help each student. We're also required to look at the different groups that are designated by the state. And it's important that we do that. And I'm just going to give one example. There are many examples, but I want to give one example of why it's important for us to look at the data that comes out for different student groups. And I'll use the foster youth and homeless as an example. When we look at that group of students and we look at that data, we see that their academic achievement is not as high as other groups. We see that their attendance is not as high, that they struggle with attendance. And so, that tells us, okay, we have a group of students that are struggling that need some support. So, for Chico Unified, what we did is hired a foster youth homeless coordinator who has the skills and the knowledge to connect those students with the supports and services that they need. So, that's just one of the things that comes as an advantage of us looking at different groups of students. So, with that, I just want to say we're really dedicated to both the LCAP, the LCAP process, and the outcomes. It requires that we look at our outcomes every single year. So, it gives us a chance to ensure that indeed we are progressing toward the goals that we set and the goals we set with our community. So, just wanted to give that as a little brief intro, and then I'll turn it back over to Tim and Tina.
Thank you. Good evening. Following the public hearing last week of the 2223 LCAP, tonight we bring the document before you for approval. A few notes that will follow up with what Kelly had to say about the LCAP and LCFF in general. Oftentimes when we're discussing the LCAP, we talk about targeted groups and achievement gaps. And I just wanted to add some additional clarification after last week's meeting around that term targeted groups and achievement gaps. So, the state requires us, as Kelly alluded to, to identify gaps in achievement in all the measures that are present on the California State Dashboard. Achievement gaps between are all students, so how is the district doing as a whole? And how are certain student groups performing? And there's, if certain student groups fall two or more than two levels below the all students group, they're officially identified as, that's what officially we term an achievement gap. And we use the term targeted student groups. So, those requirements are set out by the state. Do we find them useful? Absolutely. Kelly used the foster and homeless example earlier, and that's a great example of us targeting a specific group of kids to give them what they need to be successful academically in school. That being said, services provided in the LCAP, based on our analysis of these targeted groups and all of our student groups, are available to all students. For example, we see an achievement gap in elementary reading between student groups. And when we address that achievement gap, we bring in intervention teachers. We bring in professional development. And those intervention teachers are not just serving the kids in the targeted groups. Those resources and funds and personnel go to serve all kids based on their need in that area. And that's an important thing to note, because we do talk about student groups, et cetera, a lot in the LCAP. But the services that are provided are given to students, made available to students based on their identified needs. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tina to talk about our budget.
Well, right along with what Tim said, the money budgeted for these expenditures goes to all students when they need it. So, we work very closely with our fiscal department. Since the 2013 school year, when LCAP came in to be, we've followed that line of making sure that all of the funding that goes to, say, counselors, for example. In fact, as what Tim just said, if any student needs help, that student will get it regardless of who the student is. So, I just wanted to make that distinction. I think it's probably pretty clear, but if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask about that. So, with that, we will open it up for you to ask any questions about the LCAP. Tonight, we bring it to you for approval to submit to BCOE before July 1st. That is our deadline to do that. And on a side note, we do work closely with Jeanette Spencer in particular from Butte County Office of Education. She works with all of the Butte County schools on their LCAPs and plans. And she has seen no issues with ours and has given it her stamp of approval pending yours.
All right, so is there any board member who has a particular question or comment on our LCAP? Okay, Eileen?
Yeah, thank you.
Whoops, thank you. And... Thank...
Oh, boy.
Did I miss? Some comments from a consumer. It took me three times through the LCAP before lights began to come on. Today was day number three, going through from beginning to end. What I was looking for when I started going through was to look at what was being identified by our process of meeting with people and meeting with schools, parent groups, you know, what was that doing? And the overview of the meetings that started in March and ended in April was really good. You could get an understanding of, you know, what was being highlighted by the community. And by community, I mean everybody, students, staff, parents, and people at large. Because I know some community members did attend too. I saw the different breakouts in the process of who was coming in as those targeted groups and what their numbers were. And I began to look for, you know, have we covered all of those disparities with some kind of plan? And I did find that most everything that had been identified, especially where you get into the graphs where it says, you know, all students, and then which students... Let me get to it, because it makes more sense if I have this stuff in front of me. This is another thing. We need a guide that says, you'll find this here. You'll find the next group on pages... Sorry about this. I didn't write down. I think we start on page... I'm past 27.
You know, while you're looking, I'll just mention that a guide is not a bad idea. It is a very large, cumbersome, not easy to read document. Again, if I were in control of the LCAP world, it would look differently, but it is something that Tim and I can consider for next year.
When we start on page 33, that begins the measuring and reporting results. That, I mean, it may be just the way my brain looks at things and can't comprehend a lot of stuff, but that's where I really began having trouble trying to figure out what it was these metric baseline outcome things were reporting. And I also had a hard time with the graph that says that some aren't. Okay, so let's go to page... 38.
Page what?
38.
Okay.
Because 38 has the pupil achievement, local indicator, graduate, A to G completion... Because 38 has the pupil achievement, local indicator, graduate A to G completions. That's a simple thing to understand. 1920, all students was 41.9%. 41.9% of, that was my question.
That's a really good question. And to answer it, and then I'll give my commentary afterwards, that is the percentage of graduates meeting A through G requirements.
Oh. So that's what the graduate meant in front?
Correct.
Okay.
Huh. Okay. Well, I was looking at the left-hand column quite a bit to try and figure out what the other columns were trying to tell me. And so I need to pay more attention to what that column says. The CTE pathway completion, there were some disparities in those metrics. And I saw later in the LCAP that it talks about the increase that may have happened because of Chico High going to the block schedule. And I went, ah, that makes sense. So some things that I noticed were disparities. Later on in the LCAP, there's an explanation for why that may have been. If there's any way of making it a little more user-friendly, that would be wonderful. And again, all of the things that we've been talking about in the way of disparities between groups, they show up. They're not, in some areas, they're significant to the point where, for example, priority for people achievement, local indicator, graduates passing an AP exam with a score of three or higher. With some of the groups, it's zero. And that's disturbing. But our goal is to move those numbers up. And the goal is what's over on the right-hand column. The next thing that I wanted to point out was on 27, page 27, we go into how we get feedback. And one of the most interesting feedback groups was the students. And if you notice, we have gone out and talked to students at every elementary school. Where is that?
That was page 29.
It's 29, Kathy. Thank you. Ah, there we go. Yes, you're right. It is 29. And I was impressed with how the student input correlated with some of the other things from the total groups, with the exception of a couple of things. And I am hoping that those student inputs about, for example, the positive experiences with math games, prizes, meeting with accelerated, the AR goals for accelerated readers, motivation provided in classes with, you know, with things. And they encourage paper and pen activities as well as computers. I thought that was interesting and something that was of interest. And of course, they mentioned campus bathrooms. I think they all mentioned campus bathrooms. They're not in the LCAP. With the junior high student input, one of the things that stood out to me was that they were wanting to have more, it says wanting to ensure a reward system over a punishment system. Need to give students time to go talk to someone, to de-escalate detentions. Do not work to correct student behavior. Need other options. That's junior high input. And there was, at the high school level, it says big steps have been made in improving mental health services. Students need to access mental health services more. Students should not be penalized for missing class or work due to mental health services. And the alternative education does an excellent job supporting student mental health, was a comment at the high school level. And this goes along with one of the things that we were talking about at the last meeting was the ability now of students on their Chromebooks to indicate that they want to see an adult, that they want to talk to somebody instead of having to go in and sign in at the counseling office. And so this fits right in with that step that was made to make it, to make being able to access more easily. The behavior, the student at the secondary level, it says students would like to see teachers follow through more with classroom discipline issues. And they think teachers would benefit from more training. Bullying and name-calling, including racial slurs, need to be addressed more thoroughly. I don't remember seeing that as a specific PD topic. I hope it's in there. Because if the students are mentioning it, you know there's a significant need there. Students know what they need. The only other thing I have is just a tremendous amount of appreciation for how all of the identified things that we were supposed to do, how we did them, and what we're going to do to do them better, all seemed to track. Once you've been through it three or four times, it did seem to track. I do, however, have one word change suggestion. On page 48, at least, well, I have two computers here, so I'm not sure which one. I mentioned this at the last meeting until Tom said, no. Page 48.
I don't see a word on 48.
I know. Let's, let me see. 48.
At the very bottom.
1.10 on page 48, professional development. The, next to the last sentence says, "Other professional development may include trauma-informed practices, social-emotional learning, and mindfulness, and implicit bias awareness." I would suggest changing that "may" to an active word like "shall." That's not something that I want a "may" on. I believe that's one of the things we really need to have as a "will be included." So I suggest we change that to "shall," unless somebody has a better word or disagrees with me.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say I would refer to staff and see what the input from staff would be on that.
I feel like we addressed this a little bit at the last meeting, correct? Sorry. I feel like we addressed this a little bit at the last meeting, right? Refresh my memory about how the conversation went from your guys' side.
I remember.
So do I. So we can do this, and we have done this, and we do have staff development planned. The problem is we have minimal mandatory staff development. So we have the day before school starts, that is mandatory staff development. And we have four days that are after school, two hours each, actually, hour and a half for secondary now. So how we have done this, and I just want to be clear about it, is that on our staff development day, we give options. So, for example, our secondary right now is going to be very focused on the block schedule. So that would be part of what they do on a staff development day. And we can schedule it so the other items are then available. We can make one of those mandatory. But making all of them mandatory for a thorough staff development could be a challenge on time. We can do other options, offer things in the summer, offer things after school. But I just need to be clear that on those, we can't make those mandatory. We can pay and encourage people to be there. So the time constraint was the only thing with available staff development time.
Could it be "will" instead of a "may" with an "and/or"? So at least, so it's "will" do at least one.
Got it.
If that makes sense.
Jay, you want to top it?
Yeah, we can do that. And also what we'd like to do, because we have a PD plan available that we've been working on in ed services for this next school year. We would definitely share that with the board. A lot has to do with our Tier One in instruction, our MTSS continual of our UDL trainings that we're doing. So we have that in place and the people that we have coming in for those trainings. But what we can do is, again, bring those to our staff meetings possibly with some of these and talk to our principals at EAC and SAC to possibly include some of these. But I also know some of our staff meetings are including those UDL and Tier One and reading specialist trainings also. So we do have things in place. But again, those things that we have on there are things that we've done in the past and we would like to continue to do. So I'm not discounting those professional developments because those are ones that we want to continue to do. We've known trauma and train, especially with our new staff that have not been through them, that we would like to continue those.
Arlene?
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. The lead-in sentence to this was what I thought provided the flexibility because it says we'll provide professional event throughout the year in the following areas. So to me, that gave administration their flexibility. But the message that, as a board member, I would like to see stated in that sentence is that it shall include or will include trauma-informed practices. And trauma-informed practices are the basis of our social-emotional ACEs impacts on our kids and how to deal with the trauma that students have faced, social-emotional learning, and mindfulness. And the mindfulness is something that's a unique kind of process of dealing with all things. And it's not something that, in my opinion, that we all have the innate skills to provide our students with a way to, you know, to get in touch with how to calm, how to, you know, the mindfulness exercises that can be done in just a very, very short period of time can be extraordinary. And of course, the implicit bias awareness is in all areas. And so that's why I wanted to put it as a "will" or "should."
I have a question related to this same thing, this particular item about professional development for those four pieces. And it's that there's $0, I think, outlined for spending on that. But I'm assuming that's coming from somewhere else that's not in the LCAP?
Yeah, we're using ESSR dollars and Title II dollars for that, to make that happen.
So that plan goes in the LCAP because we're going to be doing it, but we're pulling from a different funding source.
Exactly.
And then same thing for the school climate surveys.
And I totally agree with Ms. Robinson. And one of the other things that we do when we plan our professional development plans for the years is we meet with our elementary district leadership council and our secondary leadership council. And we plan out a plot for what, you know, they will also believe that they would like to see in our professional development because we trust our teachers too on that. So it's between the district office and my team and our DLC that plans out the professional development.
Eileen, were you making a motion?
I'm going to make that in form of a motion.
I don't think we're at the point in the rules of order of making a motion at this time. We're not there yet in the rules of order. So we still have to ask for public comment and continue asking questions of staff and all of those good things.
So this is, my only part about this is that this is a pretty narrow specifics issue right now. And we were collecting other comments about the LCAP. So if you could hold on to that. Does anyone else have other comments on the LCAP? Well, I do. And it was back to page 27, when we're looking at the community meetings, feedback, and facilities need improvement. That was also brought up by some parent groups and by students. And we do have a statement in this about the nature of that. First of all, LCAP doesn't pay for facilities. But the second part about this is we have a modernization facilities plan that's all scheduled. It also requires money. The money would not come from the LCAP. So I just wondered if there might be, because it was mentioned multiple times about facilities, especially bathrooms. So I wondered if we might put a little stronger statement that recognizes that the LCAP does not pay for facilities and that there is a facilities plan. Because I think it's a perfectly valid point.
Your point is well taken. We thought of that too. On page 31, at the end of that educational partner input, which is what was formerly known as stakeholder input, at the second to last paragraph, we addressed exactly the two things that you just talked about, that the LCAP does not fund facilities. And also, we referenced the modernization plan.
And the math things. You got that one too. So you did respond to the.
Oh, yes, and the math. Yes.
Yeah, the most common points. Pardon?
That's page 31.
Because those comments were made by multiple groups as feedback. And I think it's really important that the public realizes that we are responding to those comments. They were, their participation was important.
I do have a question on that note. How is that different from Action 1.4 Facilities Maintenance for 5.5 million out of LCFF funds? I'm looking at page 77, 2223 Expenditures Table.
Can you repeat the page number?
The total expenditures page?
So in reference to page 77, the facilities maintenance is our maintenance department. So that's separate. That is maintaining the existing facilities so that they're safer students, safer staff. What I think Dr. Kaiser was talking about was the addition of new facilities or modernizing our existing facilities. So for Chico Unified, it would be the differentiation between John Carver and his staff, which is what's here on page 77. And then the facility master plan of new facilities or modernization would be under Julie Kissel's purview.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. I think that's good for the public to hear about, you know, what these funds are specifically going to and are allowed for, and also where the funding source comes in for those other projects that, you know, we all acknowledge need to be done.
All right. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, I'll open this.
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say beforehand that I will be voting no on this LCAP for reasons previously stated in last year's discussions. I like the old LCAP a lot better. I don't like the fact that we've given up on the basic, more garden variety goals that used to exist in the previous version of the LCAP. I also feel that the various LCAP meetings that we're having, I think, are structured to be kind of a curated feedback mechanism. And I see a lot of politics finding their way into the structuring of curriculum. way into the, the structuring of curriculum and our resources through, through this process, and I think we should go back to the way that it was.
All right. Any other comments?
Sure, I would like to agree with Ms. Tennis in part, in that I think we might want to look at how our community feedback meetings are structured in the future, because I also received several comments about feeling like they were more curated show and tell than actually information gathering sessions. I'm not sure how to fix that, but we'll think about it as we go into next year.
So did, did any of the board members go to any of the, those meetings? Because they really were set up where we, and I know we have parents there, where we asked what is going well and what is not working, and collected all of that data. So there was the opportunity for us to hear what we were doing well and what we should continue to do, but also the very specific, what isn't working and what needs to, to change, what do we need to do differently? What I would agree with is the time, I mean, you start getting into the conversations and they really take a lot of time, and I think that we need to build in more time, and probably especially for that second question, you know, what is it that we need to do differently? But out of those meetings, we did come up with lots and lots of input and lots of feedback, and I can say as someone who sat at a table and took notes for the group, I was the note taker. There was lots of, there were lots of things we were doing well, which was great to hear, and I, and I think that's important for us to know, so we continue doing it. There were lots of suggestions of things that we'd do differently, some of which we could not do. Restrooms came up a lot, there were things that, you know, we just cannot do with LCAP dollars. We probably need to do a better job of describing that, that, yeah, great input, we can't build this. And then, at least for my table, and I think most people followed suit, I would then turn that list back over to the parents and say, I need a parent to report out on this, read it through, you pick the ones, if I miss something, add it. But I tried to get every comment that was written down. So very open to other ways to do it, but I don't want it to be seen that we only talked about good things or it only came from us, because that was, that was not the case.
I just wanted to make a comment on that last, that last piece that you gave about turning it back over to the parents, because having participated in these, in other committees in the community, it, it can sometimes feel like the person taking notes, if they're already in staff, it's almost like they're just writing down what, you know, what's going to make it look good, or, you know, kind of directs the, the conversation in a, in a direction that's going to, you know, paint a positive light, so to speak. So I think it is important to emphasize to all folks that are taking notes that it needs to be reviewed by the rest of the members of the note-taking system. So if that wasn't helping, happening at every single table, if that wasn't normalized, that's something that maybe we just consider and make sure that we keep doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Ms. Tennis, I, I do recall that last year you were very concerned about the, that how many people had information about and, and had been advised of these meetings and had the opportunity to provide input and/or attend. And I paid attention to the effort that the district was making to get every single household notified of when the meeting was, what it was going to discuss, and, and then having the, the ones that were targeted just for specific groups, so that there was a, a smaller group to, of parents to talk openly about what their specific concerns were with their student group. I'm, I'm, I'm just at a loss for understanding how you don't feel this year's process provided as open and productive process as, as could be made. We even had the notices in several languages, not just interpreters. I, I just, I'm sorry that you don't feel supportive of our LCAP, because it exemplifies, you know, putting not only the money, the staff, the resources behind the things that we have said are our number one priority, which is bringing up all of our students that, that are not up with the, the 100%, the all-students metrics. And it, to not support this plan and all of those resources puzzles me. I, I just, I, it's like I want to ask, what more do we need to be doing?
I'd like to just make a point of order, because I should have interrupted Mr. Tennis, but I am not feeling like the interrupting type tonight, but it would be more appropriate to have these when we are in discussion with the board and have a motion on the table. So I would suggest that we focus our, our comments and our questions to staff at this time before we take public comment. I don't think it's appropriate for us to convey how we plan to vote before we hear from the public as part of our rules of order.
All right, so any more questions that would be directed to staff? I did have a question about the mathematics, Tim, of the statistics being reported where there's a number sometimes given in brackets after that, and the numbers were under 10, which is needed for statistical significance. It sometimes says two or six or...
We chose last year, following the targeted student groups, to show student groups under 10. Due to feelings of certain student groups being ignored. I recognize that there's inconsistencies in the, the N size in, in parentheses, and that was a clerical error essentially, and that's something we'll work to clean up.
Okay, thank you. For the audience, this is particular on page 57, for example, if you're not familiar with statistics, a group number that's under 10 is not regarded as statistically significant. And some of the groups where some of the changes were the most dramatic, I'll just pick out one, Filipino went from the highest number we have to zero, and it was just flipping back and forth. So my mathematical conclusion was, it's a very small group.
It, it is a very small group, especially going back to Eileen's comment earlier when we talked about graduating classes.
Yeah.
Where we may have an 850 student graduating class, and then we break that single grade level down into student groups that are already small when we look at the whole district, the numbers get really low. That being said, again, the feedback from our, our targeted parent groups was a feeling of being ignored if they were left out of the LCAP.
Maybe we should have a, just an explanatory sentence about we are representing every group.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other direct questions to staff before I turn it over to the public comments? Okay, so I open it up for public comment. Do I have anyone in the public? Yes, of course. Come on.
While she's set it up here, I had a glitch with my childcare communication tonight, so I actually am going to have to leave in just a few minutes to go pick up my child from daycare.
Okay.
Hello, I love the expectation of me coming up here. So, yes, so what Mr. Tennis and Mr. Lando brought up about the LCAP meetings, one, very happy that we are having specific group meetings for LCAP. I had actually suggested to Diane in 2020, when all that happened, of like, parents that have children with special needs, we don't, some don't show up to these meetings, because we feel most of the topics discussed do not apply to our students. That's why there tends to be a lack of involvement in PTA, PTSO, PTO, all those things, because we feel those things don't apply to our students. But going back to what Mr. Tennis and Mr. Lando said, it did kind of feel like a big old, we're amazing and we're great, and here are all the wonderful things that are happening. And we had very good facilitators at our group, but our group tends to be a little more vocal about our concerns that we have, and so we left the meeting upset, because we felt that, one, it was definitely short on time, like there is a lot more detailed input that we could have given. Felt that it was short on time, and again, just felt like it was a big old, we're amazing and we're great. And that's not to say that our district does not, is not 100% wrong, but there is definitely room for improvement, and I think it's important at these meetings, where some parents aren't as involved as Jessica and I tend to be. I kind of felt if they hadn't, haven't been involved, they were kind of like, oh, like it isn't as bad as I thought it was, here's all the amazing things that our district is doing. And that's not the case. Like, there is definitely a lot of room for improvement, and I felt it could have been better addressed in presentations and things like that, that were displayed at the meeting. And like Kelly said too, like, I think a meeting is like an hour, if that, maybe two hours, definitely not enough time. I think it'd be beneficial to have them quarterly, because there's always ongoing concerns, and sometimes parents don't make notes of like, oh, when this comes up, I need to make sure to address it at this time, or I need to email this person, or I need to come to this school board meeting. If we have those meetings more regular, regularly, I think that allows for parents to give like that continual input of what's going on, what's happening, what we need to improve on, and yes, showing us what is going well, but not having that be the complete presentation of giving ourselves a big pat on the back when it's not completely deserved. Thank you.
So we are obligated to have the two LCAP board meetings in this cycle, I mean, a week apart, but are you suggesting more frequent, I'm, I'm kind of picking on you, are you suggesting more frequent LCAP meetings for the very specific LCAP groups that like, you know, homeless or disabilities?
Yes.
Or is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification.
Yep.
All right. Okay, any other, come on up.
I gotta go.
Okay.
Is it me? Is it something I said? Just kidding, just joking. Didn't get my time, my time.
Are you going to be able to come back?
I'm going to try, but if she's not in a good mood, I'm not going to put everybody up.
Okay, okay.
She's not been doing well, so.
Oh, all right.
It's my heart. Hi, everyone. So, yeah, I, I agree, I think somewhere, we've gone too far right, or too far left, whichever one, we've gone to an extreme here from a political perspective, from like a radical perspective, and it's so much terminology and so much information that you're trying to kind of catch up to and digest, right? So, so last year's LCAP plan, I'm still trying to realize the terminology, and we're still onto MTSS and all sorts of things. So I'll give you a couple of examples. So, I mean, it's a whole world of equity, right? What's equity? It's like two perspectives, and if one side's too far out here, the, the other side has a big meltdown. It gets very intimidating. It was very intimidating here last week, right? We had one physician, one man here, and a whole another slew of people over here, and it was like, I felt the whole world imploding. It's very intimidating to come in here and ask questions about equity and things that are so progressive and so far to the left. So it's extremely intimidating. You know, and we, we had this attack on Rosedale Elementary, and, you know, I watched it from afar, and I looked at every perspective, and the fact that, you know, we've got a kind of, you know, a perspective of one side that is able to consume and absorb and, and come in here and, and march in here with a big production, that makes it extremely intimidating. I mean, there was costumes and music, and I didn't know what was going on. And when you take a step back, you've got teachers in this community at that elementary school, and parents that have been there for decades saying one thing, and then you've got this one faction over here, and there's, I mean, there's all sorts of inflammatory information in the media. I mean, how is this woman allowed to go to the media and let Natalie Hansen gin this whole thing up? We had like almost a race war outside, it was insane, and I, you know, she's, it's just, it's just way too far out into another perspective here, I guess. And when I look at the, you know, the policies and programs, again, if I look at, this one's ABAO, Service Proposal for Chico, Best Practices for Equitable Access. I mean, here's, you know, equity is a driving force in all decisions for any learning organization, great. Interrupting and disrupting inequitable systems and structures to transform the experiences, that's the goal, that's the aspiration? Interrupting and disrupting, that's what's happening. And it happened with the Rosedale Elementary thing, it happened last week with, with the two people, it's happening constantly, it's all politically based. And then you've got everything connected to Chico State, which is, we know is extremely progressive, right? Stonewall Alliance is right here for your, for your counseling pages, and you've got, you know, a goal here to continue to strengthen lines of communication with CSU Chico. I'm like, what happened to the churches and the other organizations that we've banned that aren't allowed equitable access? So I just think we've gone way too far over here, and we're, I'm just a normal person trying to catch up to the terminology and the policies and procedures, so I don't know the answer, I just think continuing the process is just going to create more problems and more, more, more disruption. So, thank you.
All right. And did you also want to speak?
On some of what Elaine said about the time, it is really a short amount. I mean, school site council itself meets quarterly, I don't know why LCAP couldn't do the same thing. Again, I noticed that there was some groups there that didn't have a lot to say, they're not as vocal as we tend to be. I thought, you know, it was nice, but when you start off with, hey, what are we doing right? You know, everybody wants to put in that, and then, oh, well, we only have, you know, one minute left, what do we need to work on? And it doesn't all get put out there, and, and, you know, some of us left kind of unsatisfied with the thing, you know, that we didn't get to say what we needed to say. I think LCAP is super important. I don't think, I personally don't see any politics in the LCAP meeting, at least not in ours. I mean, we're there for the special ed program. That's it. I'm advocating for my kids, Elaine is advocating for her kids. I mean, I don't, there's no political agenda for me to be there to advocate for my children. But we need these base things for these, for our, I'm just going to say it, we need these for my kids. I know Elaine feels the same, that there are some needs that aren't being met, but then we just got to talk about it more, LCAP, and have more LCAP meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that has a comment they want to make?
I'd like to respond to Jessica real quick. I, I totally see where you're coming from, and I think that you guys do a great job advocating for your kids, and, and thank you for being here, and I didn't mean to throw any shade on you guys about that. I was thinking of other, other things.
All right, well, let's keep our, we'll let the public comments, and then we'll have our board discussion. So if there's no other public comment, then I'll close. Oh, yes, I looked at you, and you didn't get up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on.
Okay. I don't really like doing this, I'm bringing this because I, I put something down on here, if that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you. Just one question.
What's your name, please?
Oh, sorry, my name is Brandy, Brandy McCann. I know that a lot of people have come to me asking questions about, hey, I know you have opinions on this or that, and what do you think about this or that? I don't really feel that I'm the one who should tell people what to do with their families or what to think. I like people to come to conclusions on their own and kind of guide them into doing their own research about what's going on. One thing someone asked me is, will our schools be affected by the president's withholding of school lunch funding for, we've all heard about this. We promote inclusion, but many things going on behind the scenes are not as transparent enough for most parents who are spending most of their time working and using what little time they have left over to enjoy their families. I know many parents who feel as though they're not included, and, you know, like me, I'm not ignorant anyway, and although it is my job as well as a parent to be aware of what changes are being made within our schools, I hear more of what's going on from my children than I do, like, information, and I don't like that. Because as we know, children have their own perspectives. Because as we know, children have their own perspectives and I believe, you guys have seen my kids, they're very bright, intelligent, but I, it's a perspective in their kids. So I would like a little bit more transparency is what I'm asking. And you guys are doing a really great job. I just am asking of that, where I've seen those LCAP things, you know, as a single parent, we struggle with managing all the different things that come up and especially everything that's happened in the past two years. So maybe, like she said, I liked that, that, you know, maybe making more time for things like that and not just, you know, set times by the time. I'm scrolling through my hundreds of emails I get a week. It's really hard to keep up on all this stuff. So maybe making it, I don't know, easier to understand and...
You got pretty much Saturday.
Oh, easier to understand of what's going on because... Let's see. A parent shouldn't have to struggle interpreting and will this district be as transparent with the parents regarding their plans moving forward as they are with their social media posts?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And those were your two kids that went skipping out?
I, yes, I'm sorry. I don't have child care, so.
No, it's fine.
The last speaker asked a couple of questions and I know the answers to them. On the, I read the bulletin about the budget trailer bills that were passed this week and the school lunch program subsidies are in the state budget. So we will begin, continue to have the funding for the school lunch programs. In fact, they've also expanded to allow for some upgrade for our kitchens so that we can utilize more locally sourced produce and things and have more cooking going on in our districts. And the other one was the, what was the other question? One was about the lunch program.
Well, transparency, just like they were saying that LCAP, as far as maybe...
Oh, right.
Maybe getting easier and allowing more, more time?
Yeah.
From the year.
I saw a bulletin today regarding the number of different languages that we are pushing things out from our district level twos. I'm not sure if they have just now started that. But it is intended for this next year, that a lot of the stuff that goes out to two parents will be in multiple languages. I think it's three, although I'm not sure Mung was included, but no, it's English and Spanish. And our targeted case managers, we have a lot of multilingual targeted case managers that are in contact with our non-English speaking families. So it's a significant problem. We've known it and we are finally getting some ways to be able to make that better.
Thank you. Can I ask you a little question? Is that gonna be a poll?
Was she still?
I'm gonna first.
All right, come on up. You need to ask it so it's on the mic, so other people hear your question and therefore they'll be paying attention.
No, you said you would be, the funding is already there. Did that have to do with what the president was speaking about? Was that already something that was set in place in our schools that many parents were not aware of?
The money for school lunches?
The issues that were, that he spoke of regarding that, that if the, if the schools...
I'm not familiar with any state.
Is anybody aware of what I'm talking about?
Nobody.
Nobody? It was a statement that was made regarding allowing other children of the opposite sex into the same bathroom.
Those, those things are not in the LCAP at all and I have no new information on that. I do know what you're talking about and it was a statement made through the Department of Education that the president initiated.
And why that's a concern to me isn't because, you know, I have any judgments toward other people, but just speaking to my own, you know, my daughter who's 11, she felt very uncomfortable with that as that was allowed in her school. She didn't say anything like mean or, you know, she's not that way, we're not that way, but she just felt uncomfortable.
It is a complicated issue.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So I just do want to address that in that right now, it is a public comment period. So we really encourage you to reach out and I believe Erica can provide a link if you're interested, but they are asking for parent feedback into that decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you for coming up.
And I'd just like to continue and address some of the issues that we heard. We are absolutely happy to have more meetings and gather more input if people come. We like that. We're happy to listen, happy to learn and work with people. That's not a concern at all on our end. We do have our board agenda and in fact, if you look at your agenda, you can go right up to the top and there's a little toggle switch there and you can put it in many, many, many different languages. And other documents, same situation. Erica has done wonderful work in ensuring that we get online services that allow that translation to take place for most of our documents that go out, especially via social media. In regards to the LCAP, I am going to be the first to tell you that this 108-page document is not user-friendly, it is not family-friendly, it is not even educator-friendly. It is a format that we are required to complete by the state. It's, I mean, nobody can look at this and say, wow, I now understand what's happening in schools because I read this. That is just not the case. So I just want to be very upfront that we don't put this together thinking, wow, it's really enthralling reading and people are gonna be excited and fully understand what we do at the end. That is not the case. It is a mandated document that we do. What we do after this is done, we did it the last two years, is a two-sided sheet that is a synopsis of all of this that is user-friendly. So I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, all of your comments. This is, even though it was designed to get community input and tell the community what we're doing, it's not an easy document.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and now we'll move back to the board. So again, for the board, we don't have a motion yet. Was that what you were gonna do, is make a motion? All right?
Yes, Dr. Kaiser, thank you. Okay, let me get my, this is the first time I've ever tried this with two computers up. I saw Tom and, I'm not sure, Matt, if you've had two computers up, but it looked like something that would work. So I want to make a motion to change the word "may." What was the page?
Page 48. It's 48, I think.
48?
48.
I'm getting there. Well, maybe having two computers wasn't a good idea. The 1.10, provide professional development and a reminder that this is regarding professional development throughout the year. And I do recognize that the way it's developed and stuff, that there's a lot to be covered. However, even understanding there's a lot to be covered, I believe that things mentioned in the sentence that I'm proposing change from "may" to "will" include some of our most important areas of focus. So I would change, other professional development will include trauma-informed practices, social emotional learning and mindfulness and implicit bias awareness. That's my motion.
All right. Can I have a second? I'll second that in order to allow the discussion to continue.
All right. Ma'am?
Yes, please.
So my concern is the same thing that was brought up by staff. We have to, we definitely want to cover this, but I also don't want to be out of alignment if we don't have a specific training on each one and we only touch on them at some points. So I'm hoping there's some kind of language where we can say, our goal is to cover all this. I agree completely, this is all important, but I also recognize that we have a very limited amount of professional development time built into the contract. So if staff has any idea about language to that effect, I know Caitlin's working on something, but Caitlin, do you remember what her suggestion was?
I think Caitlin said, other professional development will include trauma-informed practices, social emotional learning and mindfulness, and/or implicit bias awareness. She put the "and/or" in there.
I believe that would be acceptable to me, yes.
To add "or" to the "and..."
And/or for the last item.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay with that as a secondary. And Jay, is that gonna give enough timeframe work?
Yeah, we will, we'll board and what the LCAP says, we will continue to offer those trainings as best as we can throughout the school year.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this motion?
So just for my own clarification, I guess I should look at the exact language. What page is that on?
Page 48. Item 101. 1.1.
1.10.
1.10.
It's the last thing.
So it says "and implicit bias awareness," "may" included, and the change would be?
"Will," and then the last part, "and/or."
So instead of saying "and," okay, "will" include these things, "and/or implicit bias awareness." Thank you. No further comments right now.
All right. If there's no further discussion, then we'll take a vote.
Robinson, aye.
Lando, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Tennis, nay.
Okay, so that's three to one, so it passes. Okay, all right. Were there any other changes that someone on the board wanted to make?
I don't have, can I grab the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any other specific changes. The things that I mentioned to Tina and Tim about giving us some more guidance as we work through the format. I know we're stuck with the state's format, but we can do some user-friendly, you know, how to decipher, because this is not user-friendly. This is not parent-friendly. It took me going through it three times on three different days and several hours of, you know, reading, rereading, trying to connect the dots. And that's not, that's not good for getting the kind of participation that we're all anxious to have, as all of the speakers indicated and the superintendent has indicated a willingness to provide more opportunities for input. If the document was a little bit easier for everyone to engage with, I think we'd see a more productive, and by productive, I also mean if you go away frustrated and angry, that's not productive. And so I'm, that's, those are my only suggestions. I understand, you know, the reason why it is the way it is, but I also hope that it can be changed to be a bit more user-friendly. Not, I know we can't change what we are required, where we are required to respond, but we can do a roadmap. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah?
Yes.
So, yeah, on that note, we wouldn't be doing something we weren't supposed to do by the state if we added something in front of it, right? Like a kind of an executive summary slash table of contents for hot button issues?
I don't think that we can, but I'll turn to Tina and Tim. I mean, the template is the template here.
It would need to be an entirely separate document. But yeah, the template is the template.
And I would have one thing to add. We'd work with BCOE, specifically Jeanette Spencer, to make sure that we were not going outside of anything we needed to be going out of.
And I understand that the template is what it is. I think, what I'm thinking of at least, was something like an extra document that, again, it's kind of an explainer in, you know, plain English, that we could also then use that before the LCAP meetings to distribute to parents and say, hey, here's the short version, kind of like the flyer, but maybe a little bit, with a little bit more meat on it.
Right. And just to be clear, we do not distribute this whole document at the LCAP meetings because people would probably run. But I'm thinking, you know, listening to what you're saying and Eileen saying, maybe something along the lines of what Ed Services presented last week as the overview of the LCAP, which is a little more friendly, easier to follow, easier to see what the specific goals are and doesn't get into the details that this does. And this can always be that backup document for people that love this stuff and want to get more into it. But I thought they did a really good job of breaking it down last week.
So Tim and Tina?
Jane, first, Jim.
Sorry. One of my former students, too.
We all have kids at home.
Do you guys have any response to that?
I have seen examples of documents similar to what you're mentioning and Tom, I think, hit the nail on the head with something similar to our two-page summary, but with a little more meat to it. We're actually gonna meet tomorrow at nine o'clock to discuss our two-pager, so we'll bring that up in that conversation as well.
You're off.
Also at our parent meetings, I think, so then, when we actually do our community meetings, including our special group meetings, we do have more of a simplified version of what we share with the families of what the LCAP looks like and the goals and stuff like that. So we can do, continue to do work off of that, too.
Right, and that's similar to what we showed last week, the data that we showed to our parent groups. Thank you.
All right. So any other board suggestions or changes? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion then? Yes.
I move approval of the 2223 LCAP proposal document. What is it? Hmm? Oh, as amended. Yes, we amended it.
Very good, very good, okay.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Tom. We'll do a voice vote again?
Sure.
Robinson, aye.
Lando, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Tennis, nay.
Okay. All right, so with that, thank you, and we'll move to the California School Dashboard. And does that let Tina off the hook?
That lets Tina off the hook.
And for real, thank you both of you for all the work you put in.
Yes, I know you've put in tons of work.
To bring it to us. I'm very appreciative.
Yep.
Okay, as part of the local control funding formula and the dashboard that that calls for, the California State Dashboard, we're required each year to report out on local indicators. So the indicators that are metrics that can be measured and displayed on the state dashboard are done in that manner and it is left up to districts to evaluate their own progress. and it is left up to districts to evaluate their own progress towards other priorities. So this is a information item. The Cal, you can see it says Fall '22, and here we are in summer of '22. The local indicators will be displayed on the Fall '22 State Dashboard, which according to typical timelines, comes out the first week of December, so that's when we should expect to see it public. We are asked to evaluate district progress in priorities one, two, three, six, and seven. Last week, in our LCAP presentation, we listed the eight state priorities. And so these are additional measures on those five priorities. We are simply asked to evaluate our progress in the form of number ratings or narratives, depending on the priority. And whether we quote "met" that requirement or not is dependent on the fact that we evaluated our progress, not the amount of progress. We don't get extra credit for extra progress, or we don't get ding for less progress. The state simply wants us to report out that we are evaluating progress. So the first item that we evaluate is Priority One, Basic Conditions at School. And this would include proper teacher credentialing and facilities inspections, amongst other things. Priority, which we have met. Priority Two is around the implementation of state standards, where we're required to give ourselves rubric scores based on a variety of, in a variety of areas around the implementation of standards. And for that priority, we have met.
So, excuse me, Tim, just as a clarification. We didn't have state testing a year ago, so these are our results with this year's test?
These are not test results, the test results on the state standards for English, math, and science come out in the California State Dashboard.
Okay.
This is the implementation, the stages of implementation of standards, including English and math and science, but moving beyond that into, you can see, history and social science as well. Priority Three, Parent and Family Engagement, there's been a lot of talk about that tonight. And in this case, we're simply writing a narrative about how we engage families in community. And so for Priority Three, we have met the requirement. Priority Six, around school climate, requires us to administer a school climate survey and analyze those results, which we have done. So we have met Priority Six. Priority Seven requires us to write a narrative regarding how we have improved student access to a broad range of courses. That also comes out in the LCAP when we talk about CTE, A to G completion, and AP enrollment and AP test scores. So that's, that's mentioned in our narrative response, and we have met that criteria as well. And so like I said, these will be part of the California State Dashboard when it comes live in the first week of December, according to a regular timeline, and I'll take any questions right now.
I guess I have to admit, the whole thing about the amount of time it took to go through all the data, and I was just having a very conflicting schedule at home. But I was assuming testing was involved, so it really helps that you clarified that. And I don't know, I'm taking responsibility for that, so I don't know that it needs to be stressed again, but, you know, some of the parents may not understand when it says that our reach out to families was, you know, at a very high level, and that's not what they thought that was being measured.
Right, right, it's a little confusing, so I'll say that again.
Yeah.
When, when I say, you can see our, our three choices there on the, on the screen, met, not met, or not met for two or more years. So for, for this, for this metric, it would, for the parent and family engagement, it would mean that we did not have stakeholder, either we didn't have stakeholder meetings, or we had stakeholder meetings, but we didn't indicate it in our response.
Okay. All right, good, that clarification really helps me. Any other board comments or questions? All right. Speaking of family, we have a board member returning, so that's good. All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll open it for public comment. No public comment, okay, all right, I'll close public comment. All right, so do I have a motion? Just informational, thank you, that helps, all right. So, appreciate that, so we moved to Business Services and the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, Jaclyn.
Yes, so before this evening is what was presented last Wednesday, seven days ago, regarding the original budget for next school year, for twenty-two, twenty-three. And I will preface it with, as I stated last week, it's a pretty conservative budget based on what's currently in statute. So good news, we did receive word late Monday afternoon that the governor's office and the legislative leadership have agreed on a state budget. So the intent is for the entire legislature to vote on it by Friday, which is the start of their summer recess, and then Governor Newsom has twelve days to sign the budget at that point. It was bargained in good faith, so we do feel like the information that's coming out related to AB eighteen, which is the new state budget for next year, is going to come to fruition in the next couple of days. So I do want to highlight a couple of things that were major changes in the budget. So I think I did say last week there was a ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent chance I'd be back in August with a revised budget, and now it's a hundred percent, so I will be back. So I do want to point a couple items out to the board and the audience this evening. So one of the provisions that is going to go through is a three-year rolling average for average daily attendance from a funding perspective. What this does is for declining districts or districts that took a large hit related to average daily attendance due to quarantining days with COVID, it kind of softens the financial impact to the district. So we are very encouraged to see that actually come through, and it is in statute, so it would be an ongoing provision going forward. Related to that, our local control funding formula, we knew that COLA was six point five six percent, pretty substantial. The plan that is moving forward into the budget is going to be almost thirteen percent of an increase in ADA funding, on a per ADA funding perspective. So they are increasing what they call the base amount per ADA, as well as applying a COLA on top of that, so that will be substantial dollars coming to the district for that. Another provision that we are excited to see, maybe with some strings, is related to home to school transportation. So we've received a flat rate of just over six hundred thousand dollars since the inception in thirteen, fourteen of our local control funding formula. They are now going to fund sixty percent of our home-to-school transportation, which will be just over a million dollars for the district, so we are encouraged to see that. What is required though is that we transport TK through sixth-grade students, as well as any low-income students. So there'll be a plan coming forward by April first of how we're going to do that. So I will be meeting with the transportation supervisor at the end of the month to see what that leads, because we'll need to see trail over our language of the exact language of what that entails. Yes, Mr. Tennis?
The thirteen percent increase that you mentioned before, transportation?
Yes.
What category was that again?
That's our ADA funding, so our primary funding of unrestricted dollars for attendance of students in school.
And so that can be used in?
Any educational expense, so really at the priority and the will of the board.
Facilities?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the transportation of home-to-school will be TK?
TK through sixth grade.
Okay.
Is the provision right now. We're also looking at two pots of one-time money, so there is seven point nine billion on the state level, which is a lot of money. We don't know what that will equate to for Chico Unified quite yet, for learning recovery funding, and we have six years to spend that. But it's largely for additional instructional time, social emotional learning, school meals, much of what actually is supported in the LCAP, related to learning goals. The other one-time money that we will receive is an arts and music block grant, so we will have money that will be earmarked for those services as well. The other piece of great information that we did receive is with the implementation of TK, there is a twelve to one ratio, or twenty-four to two ratio at all times in that classroom, and there is funding in the, in the state budget at twenty-eight hundred dollars a kid, with acknowledgement that that is increased cost, that is increased staffing, that we would have to incur in order to run that program. So it's great to see that both the governor's office and the state legislature acknowledges that that is a cost to the district in order to have twelve to one in that TK grade range.
All right, any questions from the board?
That's really the highlights there, so I will be back in August with those revised revenues to see what that impact does to the Chico Unified budget.
It's nice to hear good news.
It's great.
Okay, so this is discussion action, so I'll open it for public comment. Does anybody want to complain about more money? We are happy. Okay, I'll close public comment. And any further discussion by the board? All right, can I have a motion?
What's the, just throw out some ideas, I'll have you do that, what sort of motions might we possibly make right now?
Approve the twenty-two, twenty-three original budget as presented.
Okay, I move that we do that.
I'll second.
All right, so Matt and Caitlin, all right. It's hard to argue with this much more money, okay, any other, all right, may I have a vote?
Robinson, aye.
Lando, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Tennis, aye.
All right, woo, five minutes, okay, good. Okay, so now we're moving still Jaclyn to the Education Protection, Protection, I'm sorry, Account.
Yes, EPA, or Education Protection Act, was voted in by the voters in November of 2012, related to Prop thirty. It's not new money for the district, it's just a different pot of money that must be used for non-administration essentially. So we do, as presented last week, we do have thirteen point eight million that would be in this account, and we are using a hundred percent of it on teacher salaries. They are the closest to our kids in our classrooms, we think that's the best use of those dollars.
Okay. Discussion? Okay. Public comment? Close public comment, all right, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the Education Protection Account Plan as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have Tom as a motion and Eileen as a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, perfect. Okay, so now we go to the reserves disclosure, and Jaclyn.
Yes, the last piece related to original budget is a reserve disclosure. So any of our fund balance, or savings count, if you will, that is assigned or unassigned must be delineated as to why and what those dollars are for. So we have fifteen point seven in that category, which is basically an eight point three percent reserve. So we do have our standard three percent, based on our ADA, that we are required by the state of California to set aside. This board has taken action for another two percent, which is about three point seven million, and additional one point eight million related to some one-time money that was set aside as well. So it leaves about four point five million, and we have that set aside for cash flow, attendance volatility, really any educational expense that may come up that we haven't anticipated for, because that happens. We think it's prudent to have a healthy reserve. In the event that the economy turns south, we have a cushion, things happen, legislation changes, and we have to be able to adopt. Implementation of TK is a great example, it came very fast and we didn't see it, so we need those dollars for that.
All right. Any comments from the board? Okay, I'll open it up, any public comments, discussion? Money in the bank, all right, I'll close public discussion, all right, may I have a motion?
Sure, I will move that we accept the reserve disclosures.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Tom and Caitlin. All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Hey, girl. All right, so with that, Jim, we have the California School Employee Association tentative agreement.
Okay, so we reached agreement with CSCA back in May. Last week, CSCA down in Sacramento approved through the six-ten process this language, which we had signed off on earlier. The last step is board approval, CSCA voted on this and approved it also. This is language that we've been using for a number of years now, I think four or five years. It was in a side letter on a previous tentative agreement, but it was never placed into contract because we wanted to see how it would work, and it's worked fairly well, very well, actually. It's, it's reallocation and reclassification. And just really quickly, the difference between those are, reallocation is when a position is not competitive with the market, and we need to raise the salary in order to attract new people into the district. We recently did that with bus drivers, we do that with IT folks, probably more often than not, because that's a highly trained area. Also plumbers, heating and air conditioning, when we need people to apply for a position, so it's a good thing that works for us. The other is reclassification, so if a job changes in the quality of, or the complexity of work, for example, for example, where you need increased technical skills, the job may not be the same as it was twenty years ago. We had typist clerk twenty years ago, we don't have that now, people are working on computers constantly. So the level of knowledge and skill is much higher, so we have to do reclassifications occasionally to bring up salaries so we compensate them for their, their skill level. So anyway, all of this language is language we've been working under for the last four or five years, with the exception, the only change was we went from twenty-five thousand dollar a year cap to thirty thousand. We've had significant raises in minimum wage over the last few years, and that bumps up our minimum wage that we have to have to attract employees in our step-one salary structure. So the five thousand dollar increase gives us some flexibility to accommodate changes as they come up in the reallocation/reclassification process. So anyway, like you said, this is language we have been using for a number of years, and I'm bringing it forward to the board for approval, so we can put this in the contract as permanent language.
All right, any comments from the board?
I have a comment, but I'd like to make it after, this is for technical clarification questions, right? So I'm, just want to hold a place to talk after we have a motion before we vote on it.
Okay.
I was just going to mention to Mr. Hanlon that the position was a clerk typist. Yes, I was one.
I, I'm sorry, I literally could not understand what you said other than Jim Hanlon's name.
Mr. Hanlon had said that they were typist clerks, and they weren't, they were clerk typists.
Oh.
And I know because I was one.
Okay. All right, so I'll open it up for a public comment. This is, again, a change to a contract agreement with CSCA. Any comments? All right, I'll close it, and so is this now when you want to make your comment?
I'd, I'd like to move approval of the tentative agreement.
I'm going to second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve- Okay, so we have a motion to approve the CSA Chapter 110 tentative agreement, and a second by Eileen. Okay, sound discussion.
The second was Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second was Tom.
And I am going to vote to approve this, of course. I'm glad we've got it squared away. But I just want to put on the record that in the future I would like to talk about adding some language or money into this specifically for training for some of our parers, and that's something that Kelly and I talked about a little bit earlier.
For what?
Can you say that? Thank you.
I would like, at some point, to talk more about adding more training time for some of our par professionals.
Okay.
But just then again, as I held this position at one point, I felt very thrown into it. And it'd be great to see, maybe that's changed in the last 10 years, but either way, I would like to see a little more formalism and structure before we throw them to the wolves.
I can get you information on how much training we've actually been doing. It's quite substantial, you may not be aware of it. I can get a printout from classified HR. And if that's not sufficient, then we can certainly talk about that in closed session for future negotiations.
Thank you, the closed session conversation is what I'm looking for.
And just to back up what Tom was saying, that is one of the things we get a lot of comments on, especially with special ed parers.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. A voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Thank you, Jim. All right, so the next is the discussion-action approval of the updated new board policies. Kelly?
So we have had the first reading on all of these. They are back to the board for approval. If there are any questions or changes, we'd be happy to address those. In the past, how we have done this is the board has identified if there's any that they would like to pull for further discussion and pass the rest as a group, and then go into individual discussions about any of the ones that have been pulled.
Dr. Kaiser?
Yes?
Just for clarification, Board Policy 1313 on civility, this is the first reading on that one, is it not?
That is, and it is a different agenda item.
Right, that's where I thought we were. I'm confused.
We're only talking about items 1, 4.1, not 4.2.
We're on 4.1. 4.2 is the new board policy. We're looking at 4.1 and the items there.
And we are on 4.2?
No, we're on 4.1.
That's what I thought I had up here.
It starts with board policy.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was mistaken.
All right. So any questions or concerns with the board policies identified at between 415 and 7211? Any public comment on these? Most of these come from changes in state or federal laws. Okay, seeing none, I'll close it. All right. May I have a motion?
I move adoption of these edits.
Okay, we have a motion by Matt?
I'll second that.
Okay, Tom, second to it? All right, any further discussion?
I did have questions, but I got them all answered, and then you guys should have gotten my communications of my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we may, we then have a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so now we move to item number two. Isn't that the one you had a question about?
4.2 is the civility policy. This is a new policy that has been put forth by CSBA, and we are bringing it forward. It really sets the structure for what our expectations are for behavior. Typically, we would have a first reading, and board members, this is the first time the public has seen it, gives the public the time, the opportunity to see it. We will bring it back at our August meeting for further discussion and any changes as seen appropriate by the board.
Okay.
Question for you, Madam Superintendent. You say CSBA brought this forward. On what timeframe did they bring it forward?
So CSBA is continually reviewing board policies, and they are the one that do the template for our board policies, and they occasionally will bring forward new board policies for consideration. So this came forward in the fall of this year.
Of last year.
Correct, you're right, fall of last year. 2021.
So we're not voting on this tonight?
We do not need to vote on this tonight.
We're encouraging, though, the public to look this over as well, since it reflects the nature of our interaction in public meetings.
And it's information-only at this point?
Information-only, yes, okay, thank you. All right, with that, I move to number three, which is the tentative letter to the city about the location for alternative sites for the homeless. And this one is, Kelly?
Well, this was an item that was requested by the board that when the city identified homeless sites for camping, this is specific to RVs, that we put this back on the agenda. There had been a request to just draft our concerns about proximity to schools, especially if they were within half a mile. This is a draft letter, and certainly just a draft, open to the board using it, not using it, or making changes and edits to it. So I'm going to turn this back over to the board. This is a board-requested agenda item.
Yes, Tom?
Thanks. So for the most part, I appreciate the draft and like the language in it. I would like to see, I guess, a question put to the city of what exactly, do you have anything, as you develop these plans, that address the needs of the schools that are nearby? Like, I don't think, in what I've seen, they haven't specifically addressed that in any of the comments. So I would just like to put it out there to them, hey, we're here, we're an important, you know, population and group and entity. What are you going to do, seeing as you are this close to us?
Am I paraphrasing this by wanting to see the sensitivity of a location to a school for our students? Is that the context?
Yeah, I just want to know, they've considered that the schools are there, and what plans they have to mitigate any impact, given the schools that are there.
Yes, okay, Eileen?
Yes, thank you, Tom, I agree. The paragraph after the bullets, to me, represents that concern and that direction to the city council. Did you want to add something more, or something more?
Yes, I just didn't notice a question mark in there anywhere, so I want to make sure they know we're asking for some consideration and possible information as well.
We ask that the city council continue to support safe and active travel to and from school? Walking, biking?
I think Tom was asking for what mitigations are they going to do? Is that what I heard you ask?
Oh, what mitigations the city might propose. Oh, I completely misunderstood your concern.
Okay, any other comments or concerns?
Well, with Tom's question and concern in mind, is there anything that we could do to ask? That they, the last, please continue to consider safety, including of our 800 kids that attend Marsh? Did you want to broaden that maybe with something? Because I know things are so fluid. The city manager was saying that they are now looking at buying private property, which reduces the amount of control until it comes into the city's things. It just, it's a significant concern if they are not committing to certain monitoring and things. So I agree with you, we need to ask them, you know, what are you going to do?
Caitlin, did you?
You want to just take that as a consensus and see if you can put that in the letter?
I don't think the request was to put it in the letter, but the request was to reach out to the city, and I can certainly do that, both verbally and via email, ask them to address for Chico Unified what mitigations they plan to take to ensure the safety of schools.
I mean, I was envisioning it as something in the letter, but if you think it's more appropriate to just reach out. I kind of want it on the record to, hey, we'd like to know exactly what the specific plan is for us.
So put your question into the letter. Please inform Chico Unified of mitigations that you plan to take. Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Caitlin?
Yeah, I just, I think to kind of follow up on that, I think that the goal is that we are on the same page with the community in ensuring everybody's safety. And so our students' safety is really important. If there are folks that are, you know, existing outside near a school, that their safety is also important. If we have extra traffic to and from school at drop-off and pickup, we want to make sure that maybe there's extra resources available to ensure everybody's safety, so that, you know, the cars are operating safely around if there's increased numbers of people and things like that. So it's not a necessarily, not in my backyard sort of stance, but more of just general public safety stance, and acknowledging that schools exist and students exist, and so do these increased activity times. And if there's other people in those areas, that we want to make sure that everybody's safety is taking precedent.
Anything else that somebody?
One thing that I do want to note is that I do believe one of the locations is also close to Oak Bridge. So you may want to consider adding Oak Bridge into this as well. Did I get it in a second?
I think it's kind of all encompassing. The first time we asked the pass-through was within a half-mile, I think. Yeah, so that should be a trigger rule.
Oh, I did get it, okay.
Across the street from Burger Hut.
Yeah, for the record, for those who can't hear, the conversation that's happening, it was asked in the audience where Oak Bridge is. That's where we moved our new location for our independent online academy. It's in northwest Chico, northeast Chico. I know my directions, corner of Cohasset and Lassen, thank you.
Doesn't look like a school. Okay? Yeah, it is good inside. All right, any other comments, suggestions? I do think this is a concern. I was approached by Action News today about this, and I suspect that a lot of community members are unaware of where these camps might be located, or how close to the schools they are. So, yes, all right, so this would come back with these suggested changes?
It certainly can, yes.
Okay. So any other comments that somebody wants to add?
Yeah, I would move approval as written.
As written?
I'd be willing to amend the approval with the suggested comments from tonight, so we don't have to bring it back for approval at a later time. I don't know if that's a friendly amendment, or if that's a...
That'd be my decision, right, if it was a friendly amendment?
I think so.
Can you reiterate or summarize what the proposed amendments are?
That proposed amendments are that we ask what they are going to do, what the city plans to do to mitigate the impacts to schools, and that we are looking at this from a public safety approach, recognizing that schools have increased traffic before and after school at pickup times.
Okay, is that?
I think that sounds...
Happy to listen to specific language, if there is specific language.
Is that good for you, Tom?
I mean, I'm not going to indicate specific language. I mean, right, we set the vision, you guys execute. That's what we're always told.
I like it. All right, so...
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, all right, so we have a suggested change to the initial letter stressing actual plans and stressing community safety as the central issue. So if we're okay on that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. All right, and so this will get sent to the city council, and then hopefully Action News will be able to report out on it. Okay, so is there any board member who requests to agendize an item?
Yes, at present.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this needs to be agendized, I just wanted to bring it up one more time. We had talked, and the public had talked, about adding extra LCAP stakeholder meetings, and perhaps making that a rolling, you know, quarterly event. I don't know if that needs to be agendized, but I would love to see some ideas from staff about what that would look like, when it would look like, and how we'd manage the request for additional time for community input. So again, I don't know if that is something that needs movement, or if it's just a, hey, I'd like to see this.
Yeah, I'm not...
I feel like if it's an informational item, then we don't necessarily need to agendize it. But if it might be action, then we should agendize it.
Well, I guess the action I'm asking for is just that we give staff direction in that. Now, I've just tripped myself up and tied myself in a knot.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Yeah.
I meant that if it would be, if it would come back to us as an action item. Or if it would come back to us as informational, I feel like we don't necessarily need to vote to agendize that.
That's fair, okay. I guess it probably would be informational at this point, until we know exactly what we want that to look like, so I'm just asking staff not agendizing anything. Sorry, guys.
So that's a request, then? Okay, not a motion, all right. Any other items to agendize? All right, so with that, there is no closed session tonight, so I'm going to close the board meeting. Thank you.
I would ask, though, that the board stay put for just a few minutes. We do have a, since we're not having a closed session, we do want to honor Dr. Kaiser for her birthday that is coming up. So we do have some little treats that we would be happy to share with the board.
Does Zoom get to watch us eat cupcakes? That's really exciting for them.